You can update on here.
You see that, Larry? Tom, it's a bar there.
She said not at all. This is Trina?
No, no, no. We get her down there.
I guess we didn't start, okay? Sorry now. You want to keep it down there, please? A copy of the draft minutes of the August 15th meeting had a post on the city website. We're not going to do the committee reports right away. Oh, I'm sorry, committee reports, not department records, having also posted on the city website. We're going to have a couple of presentations because they would all like to, you know, get out of here at some point and don't want to make them have to sit through all the departmental reports. So I think we'll begin with the Public Works Partners who are going to quickly describe what they're going to be doing for us in a comprehensive plan. So who's going to be? Come on over here. Do you have something you want to distribute, too?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
So before you start, I just wanted the council to know that the committee selected Public Works Partners.
Public Works Partners, yes.
And Margaret was the council rep on the committee. And there were a whole bunch of other coaches, the mayor, myself, Michael, Michelle, Phil Brugano, Heather, Heather, the mayor. Okay, take it away. Come a little bit closer to this when you speak, because that's picking it up for that.
Perfect, thank you so much. We all have slightly different tech setups. These are just copies of a very short presentation. Which is also being, oh, sorry, which is also being shared on the Zoom as well. So my name is Celeste Frye, thank you so much for having us this evening. I am the CEO of Public Works Partners. We are, we are a woman-owned firm, that's me. And we are the, we're an urban planning and consulting firm. We are rooted in New York City, but we work throughout the tri-state, kind of the greater tri-state area and the Northeast. And for this project, we will actually be, we're teaming with a firm called SLR Consulting. We have a couple of folks from SLR Consulting who are joining us this evening as well, in case there are questions. This is Julia Fiore and Danny Goodman. And then on the Zoom, we have two of my colleagues from Public Works Partners, Mo McGally, a director, and Melissa Lee, who is the principal of, the principal of our urban planning practice, who will be leading this engagement. So we are, we're a comprehensive planning firm with deep experience in stakeholder engagement, in economic development, in labor market analysis, and in affordable housing. Sorry, I'm trying to speak to, I don't want to turn my back to you, but I also want to make sure the microphone can pick me up. What we bring as a team between Public Works Partners and SLR Consulting is an approach to bringing strategic insight with deep experience in engaging with communities and stakeholders in urban planning practices, as well as a lot of technical acumen in terms of zoning analysis, form-based zoning, GIS mapping, and also economic, economic and labor market analysis. These are just a few examples, and again, this slide is in your, in your pocket as well. A few examples of recent projects and clients that we've worked with. Within this past year, we've worked with the, the city of Syracuse on their downtown revitalization initiative, where we were working in particular to connect different neighborhoods within Syracuse that had been separated by, by the highway. Also, we worked with a number of neighborhoods in New York City. We worked on the city of Trenton, New Jersey's comprehensive plan a few years ago. And we're also working in the city of New Rochelle and the city of Norwalk in particular on sustainability planning, which I know is also a key part of what Hudson is concerned with right now. So if we go to the next slide, so our understanding from your RFP and their interview that we've already had, bless you, was that the city of Hudson is particularly concerned about sustainability planning, working to become carbon neutral as a city, while also focusing on equitable economic development, engaging with the full range of residents and the community that you have here, and affordable housing. We understand that you have a rich history of plans with a comprehensive plan from 2002, but also much more recently, an affordable housing plan, economic development plans. And so what we hope to do, and it's hard not to use the word "plan" in that sentence, what we intend to do as part of our process is to start with all of the work that you have done in recent years and build on that to develop a new comprehensive plan to help guide the city of Hudson into the future. So we have a methodology that we use. We'll assess and by looking at your existing conditions, the reports and research that you have done in recent years, as well as kind of current demographics and economic data. And then we will, the next phase is called engage. That's where we'll be doing a lot of engagement with residents, with business owners, with local stakeholders, as well as with the city itself and with all of you as the city council. And then finally, create solutions. This is where we'll actually be drafting first a set of recommendations in terms of the broad recommendations that will form the core of the comprehensive plan. Those will come to the city and to you as the city council to make sure that we are all in alignment and agreement on those, before we then begin drafting a plan document. On our last slide, if you could just go one more. This is a brief slide that runs through what the different sections of a comprehensive plan typically include. I am happy to answer questions about that. I'm not going to go through each chapter in detail at this point. But basically, it starts with an executive summary. And then we, we lay out how we do the plan. We lay out the steps that we took so that then in the future, if folks wanted to update or replicate it, that can be done. We lay out all the research findings that we put, that we find in the early phases. We, we lay out all of the community engagement work that we do. And then we put forth recommendations, policies, and an implementation plan. What we have heard and what we always think is important in planning processes is that along with a set of kind of objectives and action steps that are part of the comprehensive plan, you also have a work plan as to how you're going to accomplish those things, along with some assistance on how you might find funding to do some of what you want to do. And I think those are all the parts. There will be a formal report, but we also intend to put together an interactive webpage that will put the information, the same information that's in the comprehensive plan out, but in a much more user-friendly, resident-accessible way, in addition to the more formal report document. And that's it.
Council members, questions?
How the worst would be?
I mean, does it say who's supposed to know?
Yeah, no, it's in the, it's in the.
My apology, I don't want to say the wrong number.
Yeah, we have it in there.
Yeah, it definitely was within the budget that was 208,000. It was within the budget proposed that is available to the city.
And how long would it take? Is there a timeframe?
We have, I believe, yeah, so this slide, which you have in front of you, we proposed a 16-month process, which was the process that was put forth. We could possibly do it in a few months less than that if it's the, if the city wants to do that. But somewhere between 12 and 16 months.
And by the way, a third of that cost is covered by a grant.
Yes.
Other questions from council? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, we have a lot to go through tonight. Another presentation that requested to be upfront and early are Jeff Domanski.
He would be online.
Oh, he's going to be online? Okay.
Is he online? No, not yet.
Okay, so move right along and let's go to department reports. Liz, are you here?
She'll be here soon.
She'll be here soon. Okay, let's skip to Mia.
Hello. Long time, it'd be good to see you, everyone. I'm Mia McKinney, Commissioner of Department of State of San Antonio, Hudson. You haven't seen me too much here, but I'm happy to be here at some nice people. I'm excited to say that Pickleball Hudson is finally happening, or getting ready to kick off on the 30th of September. It's going to run until November 11th, which is really exciting. So we're giving that list together with the final logistics. So look out for that to be pumped up on our socials. Next, just wanted to say our aerobics classes, which are normally held for the summer down by the railroad at the Riverfront Park. Due to the construction that's happening down there this week, having the classes back inside the senior center just for Wednesday and Friday. So I want to announce that for any folks that pop down there and don't see us down there. And anything else? Pretty much we're still on schedule. We still have Zoom classes for people that want to do yoga on Wednesday. And we might be picking up a cheer yoga class coming in the early part of next year. So look forward to seeing you guys and thank you for all your support. Thank you.
I did a cheer yoga. Steph Donovan, when is this senior center open?
We're open 9 to 5, Monday through Friday.
And that's just for walk-ins, too?
Yeah, walk-ins, we come in, we have a game room that's actually open all the time. And then if there's a women that's always open as well, that never locked, and that's just if you want to be studying or if you want to use our internet access, which is always available and everything is free.
And the staff, 9 to 5?
Yeah, we just have one staffer there, we have a clerk there, she's there 9 to 5.
Gotcha, Friday. Thank you. Any other questions?
Where, where are you for the pickleball?
The pickleball is going to be happening, I'm sorry, M C Elementary Gym, cave one.
And that is, what is that?
Starting on the 30th of September, it's going to be going every Saturday from 10 to 12, until November 11th. So look out for the socials to be there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Moving right along.
Fire, Shane. All right, we have a slow month last month, 28 calls. We had a motor vehicle accident, water rescue across the river. We had one wires call, general cleanup for a vehicle accident, property damage, one water problem, four cover assignments or standbys for mutual aid, two good intent calls, 17 false alarm calls, all smoke detector, TO problems or whatever. And that was it for 28 calls for last month. Just on a quick note, spoke about boat earlier in the year. We did get a, get a new quote. You know, I understand that some of the buildings were sold, we're going to look at some ways to try to get a boat here. The original was 207, it's going up to 217. Fortunately, that's the way the world is today, every time. And every few months, everybody's increasing prices for everything. So that's where we're at with that right now. That's all I got for council members.
Questions?
Did the prices go down for boats in the winter? I don't know.
No, no, it's a reasonable question, but no. No, they don't, they don't. It's just unfortunately, you know, same with the trucks, RVs maybe, the way everything is with everything today. You know, equipment parts and everything, it's just, that's what, that's what's happening. Everything's increased. And I know, but the recent truck we just got, if we waited longer, you were looking at a 14% increase. If you waited a month longer to make that decision, now it's across the board with everybody. It's not just one dealer, it's everybody. So it's unfortunate, but you know, no.
Anything else?
You're pretty busy on Thursday, right? Yes, definitely. Did about 13 calls in about an hour. Not to mention the third-party calls I took because 91 was down for probably about 15 minutes. So, yeah, we were pretty busy Thursday. Certainly get damaged, obviously, and, but I think it seems to be back on the run. Nothing too serious, nobody got seriously injured or killed, so that's all that matters.
Great, thank you, Shane.
Yeah.
Shane Bauer. Speaking of Shane Bauer, who is up next? Oh. Franklin is here.
Went around a long way, I guess. Happy to make my debut tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anyone need a copy of the report?
Don't feel pressured.
Yeah. Everything's good? Okay, so number of abuse force incidents were zero for August. The arrests we had were 26 with 49 total charges. And then number of emotionally disturbed person calls were seven, and calls involving drug overdose or suspected drug use was zero. August was a busy month, so I have a couple of notes to, to just add. Detective Sartor Finn retired in August after 22 years of service. And since that, Detective Perry was promoted to his position. And then Detective, we now have Detective Dunce, who was promoted from officer as well. We hired a new officer who was a lateral from Catskill, Luis Martinez. And that's where our UN ceremony was on the 5th last week. Parking enforcement officer update, we did hire one parking enforcement officer, M D Hassan. He started on the 28th. We've tried and interviewed a lot of candidates for the second position, and none of them panned out. We did have a walk-in today who took a background packet and said she would be bringing that packet back in tomorrow. She is a Hudson resident, so I'm hopeful for that. See, four, let's see, disposition or court cases. On August 16th, Jamel Randa was found guilty in Columbia County Court. Ledger of his peers, he was found guilty of felony rape charges against a 10-year-old child. August 7th, Stephen Pavone was arrested and charged with felony gun charges after HPD investigated from a July incident with a man shot in his leg and then caused a motor vehicle accident. August 24th, we had a stabbing incident with a man stabbed in the chest. And there are charges pending for all parties involved in that currently. We submitted our budget, that's done. And we started planning National Night Out, HPD's first annual National Night Out, which I'm pretty excited about. It's a community event and a national campaign to try to improve police and community relationships and bringing all organizations together. I had a meeting with Katie Hilgerman, who represents Parker Hudson, as the sheriff's department. I don't have to reach out to the state police, but the goal is to get as many organizations involved, the fire department as well, to bring everyone together and have some event for the children and just kind of break down some barriers of that. And then two life-saving events last month in August. We had two AED saves. Both different incidents, they were in cardiac arrest, and officers, detectives used our AED units and brought them both back to life. And all their persons, Maranti called and commanded us on that work.
Thank you, questions from council?
So I just want to inform the public about the fire about Columbia at 6, where the farmer's market is. As Miller said, there haven't been accidents in the nation. So you don't necessarily need to move forward with crosswalks, but I wanted to add that there is also maybe moving the farmer's market. So in that case, you know, it's might be unnecessary doing anything right now.
Do you know where it's going to move to?
Probably by the water pump, yeah.
By the water pump?
Yeah, and I also have a question about, there was an incident that pedestrian was hit on July 29th.
Okay.
I wonder if you know any more information about?
Not currently, but I can find out.
And I'd like from now on, if there was any pedestrian hit, I'd like to, maybe we can talk about. I mean, this was a very nicely failed presentation.
Oh, that is.
You sort of don't have to as well, but maybe you can give us more information, what happens to them, you know?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else in the council? Councilmen, council members online? Okay. Liz here yet? No. It's Jeff Domanski. Okay, I guess we'll go with the treasures report.
Hello, everybody. Just going to share my screen. So these are the actuals through, it says July, sorry, it's actually August. So about 67% of the year it's done. And you can see if you look at our main parking revenues, being on-off street parking, front street, parking at other permits and parking tickets, we're at 75% of budget, but only 65% of where we were a year ago. That is a combination of two things. You can see that on-off street parking is pretty much in line. Parking tickets, as we know, and as Michandis referenced, is related to a number of issues, including a lack of parking enforcement officers. So hopefully that will turn around. On the other hand, that's being offset with, you know, a nice increase in the front street municipal lot. I think we were all a little concerned that that might not come back as a revenue, but it has. And so we're all very happy to see that. In terms of building permits and fees, again, the two of them combined, we're at 79% of budget and 78% of year ago, so basically right in line, if not a little ahead of what we anticipated. So that's also great. Sales tax, we did get our second payment in, so we're at 48% of budget. That's two out of the four payments. Generally, the first and second quarters are a little lower than the third and fourth, so let's hope that that pattern continues. And I think if it does, then we will make our budget number. I don't think we're necessarily going to blow it away this year. You can see that year-to-date versus year ago, we are a little less mortgage tax. That hasn't changed. We're not going to get the next one until probably the next two or three months, so we won't know where that comes in. But, but that obviously came in quite a bit lower than we were hoping. And lodging tax is also a little bit lower than it was a year ago. I looked it up, I believe a year ago, we were at about 245,000, so we're about 10% lower year-to-date this year than we were the year before. So September tends to be a pretty decent month because that's a filing month, so we will see what happens next month on that front. And the other thing I want to do is I want to do a deeper dive on revenues across the board instead of just these categories for next month's meeting. I tried to get it done for today, but I just didn't have the bandwidth to do it. I think it'd be interesting to see where some things are coming in versus where we anticipated them. It gets a little tricky because some things like our tax revenues, we recognize 100% on January 1st. Other revenues, we know we don't get until basically December 15th, which is, you know, the state aid, and that's 1.4 million alone. So have to take those factors into consideration and sort of take those out and look at the rest of them to see if we're coming in line or not. So that's something I hope to be able to present to you all next month. Operational, yeah, so this has been a problem that I've been stressing out about. So we put out a bid for auditors. We got one response. We were just about to sign the engagement letter when I realized that what I thought was actually, the beginning of the quote talked about bidding for three years. The end of the quote talked about it just being for the, the fee just being for one year. I missed that part. I assumed the fee was for all three years because that was in line with what we have paid before. To give you a sense, our last audit expense last year was 21.5. This bid was 67, which if it had been for three years of auditing, would have been about 23,000 each year. But I read the small print and realized that they were actually bidding $67,000 for one year in an audit. So that is a more than 300% increase over our current thing. So obviously, we're going to rebid it. And what I'm going to do, and obviously you will determine if you would like me to do this or not, but I'm going to propose that I submit a resolution next week that gives us a not-to-exceed number and the authority to sign the agreement so that assuming, as soon as we get the bids back in, we can get started and engage somebody instead of having to come back a month later. Timing is obviously an issue, so that's not ideal. Same thing with the single federal audit. That was actually, you know, we were anticipating that the bidder was going to do that as well. But, you know, while I was certainly asked them for a separate bid on that work solely, it will also be part of the rebid that goes out. And that is, it's also going to require a budget amendment because that was not budgeted anywhere because we did not necessarily know that we were going to. So we have to do a single federal audit any year that the city extends more than $750,000 in federal funds. And we did that through the sewer separation project. So the question that I need to get resolved on that front is what other, and I'm probably going to be reaching out, Michael's already asked if, if we need assistance because, as you know, we now manage grants all over the place with all different people involved in them, and I don't really have visibility on all of them. So we're going to just have to do a little sort of check to see how many of the projects that have grant funding associated with them. And if I remember correctly, there's about 31 at this point. Don't know how many have federal funds associated with them because all of those would have to be included as well, and that may or may not impact the cost of what a single federal audit be. The other thing I have to confirm is whether or not our use of ARPA money is considered federal funds in terms of a single federal audit or whether it's exempted because, you know, it was an emergency plan. But in any case, there's a, still a fair amount of work to figure that out. So we're, we're definitely not going to make the deadline for that. But we will get it done. I've already talked about the fact that we've got a bunch of technology changing coming up. We're having a little difficulty in getting timelines from people, so we're continuing to press on that. One thing I wanted to bring up as well is the tourism board. As you know, all of the funds were committed from the Tourism Board Reserve Fund. However, not all of them has been dispersed. And at this point, I'm going to need some guidance probably from Ryan, if you're there, or anybody else that was involved with the Tourism Board itself, to understand why there are still funds available, whether those are still projects that people have not put in for reimbursement, or whether there are projects that the board determined were incomplete and aren't getting their full reimbursement, in which case those money's. and aren't getting their full reimbursement, in which case those monies can be, you know, reallocated. Because they were acquired under the tourism law, they still have to be applied, you know, according to the law. But, you know, it'd be very easy to just say those funds can be used for whatever we budget annually for citywide promotions. So that's not a problem legally or technically, but it is a problem in terms of trying to determine what the the actual status is.
Former Heather, but I can I can meet with you offline. We can go through lineups for reconcile.
Okay, perfect. I've got I've got a pretty, you know, comprehensive spreadsheet of what was approved via resolutions and what was paid out. So, yeah, that'd be great. I'll I'll reach out to you separately. Thank you. And then, as you all know, the twenty twenty four budget, we're about to start in process budget. We have most, if not all, of the departmental requests. And we will start booking schedules in approximately two weeks with the department heads to review the requests. And that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Heather, any questions from council? And council members online have questions? Okay, thanks again, Heather. Let's see, Liz is still not here?
I'm here, Tom.
Oh, there you go. Rob Curry. I guess Rob Curry will be up next then.
My man. So accepted revenue for July was forty thousand one hundred one dollars. The I mentioned about how this heavy rains have been battering our bar screens, and that's that's the first step of the treatment process down at the sewer plant. And at this point, the one bar screen is just irreparable. So, you know, we're we're checking on different ways to to deal with this. One is to find the you get reach out. We reached out to the original manufacturer to see if they can replicate the parts that the motor and the rake that go down and come up with a quote for us for that. We're also looking at other similar products that could be mated with the existing screens that are there, which are concreted into the the foundation of the building itself. We also, you know, have reached out to somebody about entirely different unit, but that would be a significant cost. Because it would involve by removing sections of the roof and a lot of demo work to get the existing screens out. So probably not going to be that option, but we do have to come up with an option. The channels are designed to be fully redundant, so, you know, we are able to manage the regulated seventeen million gallons of storm flow. But, you know, we were used to having a backup. That's something we don't have one right now. Also, if you remember last month, I told you about our report from the DEC. And so there were a couple punch list items. One was they wanted, this is a CSO five, which is down by the slip by Rick's Point. They wanted the trees and brush removed, so that way people could see the sign and actually look down in there and see if there was something discharging. Dry weather discharge. One of the other things was to do some site work at CSO six, which is that ravine behind between Oakdale and the fire station. And so part of that is to install a significant storm structure, which that was delivered a couple of weeks ago. Just the this one base here is sixteen thousand pounds. The next smaller piece is nine thousand pounds. So it was quite a chore to get it off the back of the truck. So we're looking at the pipe should be received within the next couple of weeks. And then after that, we'll we'll move forward with, you know, complying with DEC's directive. We also have, you know, this is just, where did I go? So, you know, there's been some discussion about sinkholes and storm sewer, stone sewers. So I just, this is an actual image of we have a contractor that comes in with a camera and a little a little robot. And so when I'm talking about a stone sewer, I'm not, you know, that's not being. You know, it's not a colloquialism or any kind of metaphor. It's legit. These are stones that were carved out, chiseled and laid on top of each other one by one. You know, they would have used an open trench, placed these in, and then they would have put in a large capstone on top. So, you know, these are these are running and active throughout the city, some working better than others, obviously. The our one of the our speedies permit, which is what dictates what how our system operates and what requirements we're supposed to meet. That was under, it had expired probably ten years ago or so. We were under administrative extension from the DEC. While they reviewed our submission to upgrade the the old speedies permit was for two point eight million gallons a day. Obviously, with the new sewer plant, we can do significantly more than that. But, you know, that's true with the, you know, a lot of these bureaucracies, the our paperwork and our efforts sat on somebody's desk, then moved to another desk, then moved to another desk. And now, ten years later, we had to resubmit all that information because the other information was no longer valid, according to them. And but that has been submitted, so we will expect a modified speedies permit sometime in our future. There was obviously the power outage. There was a storm that came through Thursday and with the power outage. So this is actually from my porch. It's hard to see. There's a tree across a coar that got knocked over. But you can see the lights on in the background. And that's because, just as a fun fact, Hudson's fed from a couple of different sources. So if you're on Rossman Worth Prospect Avenue, you're fed from Claverick. If you're below Third Street, you're fed from Germantown. And if you're in the middle, you're fed from the Greenport substation. So that's why it's not uncommon to have one part of the city without power. And then everybody else is like, what are you talking about? I've got power. So just to kind of, it becomes a question from more than often. All right, so as part of the outage at the water plant, it scrams the water plant when the power goes out before the generator starts. So in this instance, this is a PRV valve. You can look at how tall the guy is and just get the idea of how large this valve. This valve is essentially holding back the reservoir. The reservoir is a hundred feet higher and eighty million gallons than the plant. So this valve opens and closes as the as the filters need more or less as part of the filtration process. Because of this, whatever happened electrically, this actually ended up shutting down. It does have a control mechanism to it, and it was offline. So our plant was actually offline for not quite a day and a half. But a good, you know, probably fourteen, sixteen hours. When these guys showed up, we had some control issues as well. The the plant's been online since it went off when the storm hit on Thursday at eight. And it's been on since Friday afternoon, and it continues to build. We did drop about seven hundred thousand gallons. But, you know, we still have one point eight million in a tank, so and we've been building, you know, consistently each day. And just to shows you that when the when the we put the plant online, you know, there's always some kind of sediment that gets scarified from the mains. So there's a little bit of a sludge that we blow that through. And then you can see the clarifiers, everything is clean and pristine as we expect it to be. One of the other maintenance issues is, you know, these are the actuated valves, which is basically there's valves that are smart. And based on the process control, they open and close automatically based on parameters are set in them. So this happens to be, you know, but it's a significant process. They're heavy, so there's all sorts of chains and everything to pull it out. And this is the the new seal that's been installed with some water that was getting by it. Also, last week or the week before, there was a water break on Parkwood. In this instance, you can see a significant crack along a large section of the main. So in order to remedy that, we cut out a section of the main and put a new section in with a couple of high next couplings and put the water back on. It was it was out for, it went out about two in the afternoon or between one and two in the afternoon. It was back in service at six thirty, so it was a pretty good turnaround time. DPW, we're doing more seasonal paving. This was on Harry Howard. You can see there was a old gutter, old drainage gutter, so that was dug out. At that point, they cleaned it all out, get a lot of the rubble, and then they started doing the blacktop. It's all by hand. You can see the wheelbarrow up here in the background. You can see a little roller here and this. Sorry, this the rake that's here is called a loop, and it's all just done by handwork and then a roller comes in to finish it off. At which point you get this product right here. We match it to the road as well as the invert elevation of the rim elevation of the the storm drain. So that way, water goes into it like it's supposed to. Also, we did put the open the paving bid for this year. A couple of contractors did pick up bids, but only one submitted one. So that was Calaruso for five ninety eight. So I have the new letter from DOT, which we're putting in the form of a resolution to amend our chips balances, and that's how much DOT agrees to cover, which is more than enough for this project and several several others. Also, there was, we had a, there was a tree that was down in the river, and, you know, people were kind of saying, what's going on with this? You know, it's it's above the high water, the high tide. You can see it's in the river itself. So it kind of took a little bit to make sure what if any special permits were required. You know, there it is a wetland that the middle ground flats is considered a wetland. So whether it was in the buffer, you know, whether it was a river or anything. But it turns out when it's something like this and it's dead, you can just remove it, which is what we did. So the off the parks. So in the springtime, you know, I worked with Star White House to try and get a landscaper in to do some pruning. And we met with, reached out to a couple, never could get them to actually meet with us. Obviously, they're all busy. So we did have a productive meeting this past Friday with another group that is a local group. And they're going to do a fall cleanup, which is going to, you know, getting rid of these grasses and schumak. And this is around the Winifred area. They're going to selectively prune. And, you know, then we'll get ready for some potential other plantings to go in in fall and get this straightened away before the winter. The annual OSHA inspection of our nineteen ninety seven bucket truck, it was taken out of service. You know, there's a new bucket that needs to be ordered, which has been ordered, but it's three or four weeks out. You know, we use the bucket truck regularly for something like the banners and putting lights in the trees and taking the flags up and down there on the city streets. But there it's also our way to manage our the traffic lights, which we own and maintain, which there was one that was out over I think Friday, and as soon as the truck was, we have a rental truck that we have now. And I was able to, you know, be used to to address that. But, you know, we have obviously the storm damage and the trees and everything. You know, bucket trucks are something that we we definitely need in our inventory. And, you know, so we'll be, you know, hoping we can come up with some kind of a solution to get rid of this old junker that's twenty five years old. And and this is actually a used one, but only has seven thousand miles on it. So it's, you know, it's like new. This is the bid that went out for the Ferry Street Bridge. And a bid opening is this Thursday at ten AM. So we know that there are several interested bidders that have been reaching out to Creighton Manning, asking questions. We'll open the bids Thursday, and, you know, that gives Creighton Manning a couple of days to review, to make sure that there's no you know, nothing missed or any kind of errors in the calculation of the tabulation. And, you know, assuming that everything goes as planned, we'll have a resolution for the council next Thursday to award this bid. And then, you know, we can get started with this project after so many years. I also, Amtrak is, I know it's on the website, and we put signs down there, but Amtrak is closing their Akron crossing at Broad Street for three days. I believe it's either tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday, or Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. I'm not sure. But there will be no vehicular access, so you can still walk across the pedestrian bridge at Ferry Street. But, you know, no trips to the boat launch for the next couple of days by car for sure. I do have a meeting coming up with National Grid. As you've seen, the new gas main installed on Green Street and up on Columbia Street. They're also going to be installing new ones on South Third Street between Allen and Warren. And they're going to be installing a new one up Warren Street, the three hundred, four hundred and five hundred blocks up to Sixth Street. So when I have a schedule, I'll let everybody know what that is. But that is, it's basically identical to what you've seen on Green Street. They have some pretty heavy equipment that comes through, makes relatively quick work of it. They put a couple hundred feet of gas main down in a day. Up in the cemetery, you know, I mean, we've we've closed it, you know, there's announcement on the website. But obviously, you know, we live in a city where rules are for other people, so there's still people walking around. But there's, you know, this is significant damage. I mean, most of these, there are, there are a lot of, there are some broken limbs that are down, but there's a lot of uprooted trees. And, you know, these, these aren't, you know, these aren't little Butler pear trees. These are, these are huge trees. And some of them have actually, you know, some have broken off at the trunks, some are at the roots. But some have also, like this one here, ripped, you can see there's a section of the the curbing, the road is ripped up on two lay and two sections of the water service, because there's hydrants in there for people to get water. They've been ripped out. It's, you know, it's not just a convenience factor. There's there's widow makers hanging in trees. You know, a lot of trees, we don't know what what kind of structural damage they may have received. They they may look fine. It's 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 a big deal. It's going to take a while for us to clean it up because it is, you know, a pretty significant, you know, devastation. I didn't reach out to County EMS today to find out if there was any discussions about a FEMA declaration. And he said, no, the state's not even entertaining it. It's not. It doesn't, the state needs to have for a declaration before they ask the President of the United States. They have the, you have to meet a threshold of thirty seven point five million dollars in damage. That's, you know, you see that in flooding, you know, you see that in ice storms. We've seen it from time to time and crazy snowstorms. But in this instance, it's, you know, there's no real property damage to this. I mean, there is, but it's not. The county has to make a number of like two hundred seventy five to three hundred thousand. And utility damages do not count. So there's notice, so which means if it had been a FEMA declaration, we could hire a contractor, turn this all over to them. FEMA would pay a hundred percent of it, and it would be done, you know, lickety-split. That's that's not going to be the case. So with our forces doing it, it's just going to take a while to get this thing cleaned up. And that's all I got.
Okay, council members, questions? Rob, there's someone scheduled to ask you some questions here. Jack Dillon, right?
Yes. Hi, Rob. How are you? Jack here from four four two. So you saw earlier the stone sewer that looks so neat. One of those actually runs under my home, under my neighbor's home, has a habit of flooding a lot during high rains. So Rob, I wanted to ask you on the city's plan to remedy flooding for my home and also several other homes on Union Street.
Well, as I've sent you in two emails, right now, we were able to conduct a live inspection during one of those events last week. And my foreman and the crew pulled various manholes and were able to witness that the flow is actually coming back up from Fourth Street. Obviously, it's supposed to, everything's supposed to flow down towards the river and the sewer plant. So that tells us that there's some kind of an obstruction or restriction downstream. So we do have the camera coming back to investigate downstream. Hopefully, we find there's a something either obstructing or some kind of a failure downstream. And we're able to repair that, and then everything runs at full capacity again.
Are you saying that if you clear the obstruction, that this would be kind of a resolution to the flooding at the homes on Union Street?
That's my goal, yes.
You see that it's kind of case closed on the flooding?
If there's no, if we've, if we find an obstruction or restriction and we're able to fix it, and there's no more flooding, then yes, I consider it resolved.
Okay, because I would see that as not permanent, because of course it could reoccur. And you all saw the sluice wave was built in eighteen eighty five. I believe so. It's a hundred and fifty years old. So I was wondering, so you're, you have no plans at this time then to repair or replace the eighteen eighty five sluice wave itself? Is that right?
Well, we have, we're going to investigate and see what's happening downstream.
Okay, when you considered any other options that you would want to, then you then you it could explain why you ruled out?
I haven't ruled anything out. We're just gonna do the investigation.
Okay, can I ask you this? Sorry to backtrack a bit and thanks for your time. What what is the purpose of this loose way as it exists today?
Well, you use the word sluice way, but it's actually a sewer. I mean, it's
Sure, sorry, my bad.
So I mean, it's, I mean, just so people don't, don't you think that it's something other than what it is. It's a sewer. It was built in the late eighteen nineties or eighteen ninety-three. Uh, and that's how the city built it and sometimes, most of the time they go down for, you know, the middle of the street or the middle of the alley and sometimes because of whatever design thing, they they cut crosslots. And then the city lots were built on top of them.
Right, yeah, so my home and my neighbor's home and sit on top of it, but it actually floods uh, at least two other homes that are uh situated near it. Um, so I wanted to ask how many homes are new, so it uh, it's currently being used now as an exit line for several homes on Union Street. Is that correct?
Uh, to my knowledge, I don't know how many exactly, but yes.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to
Seeing that picture, it has, you know, it doesn't have a lot of flow in it during dry weather.
But that's what I'm just wondering is it's a hundred and fifty-year-old piece of infrastructure that floods. Do we really need it and what's it being used for? You know, what's the, what's the best way to deal with it? I think your thought, to be honest, Rob, when I we first met. You had said, why don't we just disconnect this thing and fill it? And my own thinking has totally evolved to agreement with that. I think that
I don't believe I ever said those words.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said those words to me in the um engineer when we met a month ago. Um, that means both words in your mouth, but anyways, that's where my thinking is, is that it it should be declared structurally obsolete and deactivated and capped. Um, I would say, one, we it'd be great to figure out how many homes are relying on it, because obviously that's the problem. I can't just disconnect from it myself and um and then, you know, fill it with concrete in my basement, because that's gonna cause problems for several homes upstream of me. Um, so I was wondering if we can determine how many people are actually relying on this thing. Um, also, exit lines are the responsibility of the homeowner. Is that correct?
The laterals are the responsibility of the homeowner, yes.
Yeah, so and where are homes on Union Street expected to exit?
I I don't know.
Is that the Cherry Alley or partition?
Well, each, I'm sure it goes specific to house to house.
Well, then, then sorry, isn't the sewer lines down the alleys and houses were, like, if you're building a new house now on Union, you would exit to Cherry Alley?
Well, there, if you were building a new house, you could tie it into. If there's a main in the front of the house, we don't tell people you have to go to the alley. If there's, if they, if they can hit a, if it happens, you want in the street in front of the house and they want to tie into it, then certainly we allow them to do that.
Okay, so people are still encouraged or allowed to connect to the eighteen eighty-five sluice way?
Well, I don't know any new houses or construction that are there. But I assume
I assumed that would maybe be uh, you know, that the homes that were doing so now were basically unaware that they were doing it all um and had basically been grandfathered in. So what I'm suggesting basically is I think what we, you know, what I would like to see is this, we're not really comfortable with waiting and seeing. Again, we've taken that approach, you know, before over the years. We don't want to see, you know, we could clear it up this year and it comes back, obviously, in two, three years. That's, that's not helping anybody. It's still potential to do damages there. Uh, we know the increased rain flows are gonna be a continuing problem, so I would rather see it deactivated and be able to help facilitate that, but obviously I can't do it on my own. It's gotta be a bit of a neighborhood neighborhood effort to get off this loose way so that we can deactivate it between, you know, at least fifth in my home, if not all the way to Cherry Alley. And what we don't know, it might only be like three homes that are connecting to it. So it actually wouldn't be, you know, this is not a super expensive uh solution for the city. Um, you don't have to build a new sewer line or anything like that would be, that would be obviously very cost prohibitive. I mean, have you considered deactivating this loose way? Do we lose him?
I'm sorry, was there, was there a question?
Yes, there was at the end, actually. Have you considered deactivating this loose way? And if so, what would that entail?
Uh, I really, we haven't investigated that far.
Okay, how long have you been investigating?
We're, we've just been, we've investigated uh two or three times. We've had cameras there to try and figure out what the source is. Whether it was coming from upstream or whether it's, we clearly had storm flow. You know, it doesn't really have anything to do with the sanitary connections or sanitary flow from anybody on the main. It's it's storm related, so those that spend the subject of our investigation have been storm related.
Sorry, it was actually, it was um June twenty twenty-one when I first wrote you about this problem. And I'm happy to share the video at the end of the meeting of the city of the, sorry, the the sewer flooding my basement last week. We did, it's two feet that comes in very quickly. You know, there's electrical panels it could reach. It's clearly health and safety violations, not just my home, there's several other homes. They've reported it as well. Um, so it's been over two years that this is going on and it's been a lot of well, we'll check this out, we'll investigate further. Well, maybe there was a blockage and it's, you know, I'm just gonna go on record saying if the plan is to clear blockage in Cherry Alley, I would view that as an inadequate plan. I would hope that the city would view that as an inadequate plan and that DEC would also do it that way. Seems like just too little and too much wait and see. Yeah, all right. Thanks for your time.
Okay, um. Any other questions for Rob? Moving right along, um, oh, sorry. That was, that was a presentation that was pre-arranged. Um.
We're gonna hear Peter push it out. Is he gonna update us on his projects?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we can get Peter on. Sorry, I was Peter, do you wanna contribute anything?
Yes, uh, I'll answer any questions um on the projects I'm working on. Uh, I can just tell you that City Hall is progressing. Uh, we expect to uh finish the construction at the end of September and then we're gonna do a little bit of the asbestos remediation and we should be able to occupy at the end of the month. Uh, or the beginning of November.
Thank you, Peter.
Yep, thank you.
Liz.
On Green Street, Stewart's Corner, why the mess there?
Be quiet, Rob.
This gets his other project.
And we're in. Um, Liz.
Uh, sorry for being late. It's been one of those days.
Aren't they good?
Yeah, like, it's only gonna get better from here, so. Um, today is our first day of programming for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, the main reason I'm late is our county provided bus had a malfunction and um the hydraulics on the door broke, so last minute, they couldn't drive any of our kids home, so we ended up having to do like five different families of kids and that, so they're all home now. I think one van left after me, so they're all home now. But yeah, so we have both spaces set up and staffed and we're very excited to get back to the swing of our after-school and team programming. Uh, we rearranged some space of the youth center. We've got this amazing group shoot game that was donated to us um that we're really excited about. We've redesigned the space to be a little bit more of an easy flow for the kids to kind of not feel as crowded, because before it was kind of, you know, really does everything in one spot, we've sectioned it off so that um eating and snacks is in one spot and activities and games are another, so we think that's gonna be really helpful. Um, we currently have fifty-five kids registered for our grades three-day after-school program. We anticipate more registration as soon as we get back into the swing of school. That doesn't mean we'll have fifty-five to seventy kids at the center each day. Um, some kids do different programs on certain days, some kids are registered so that they can just come later in the year, so on average, we'll get usually about forty, fifty a night for that. Um. The next slide, the space that four thirty-one Union is all set up. Uh, it's really come together and uh we're excited to have our younger kids over there. We currently have eighteen kids registered for that with a limited thirty spaces. Um, got programming scheduled for the first few months, including Vennelstiff, Art School of Columbia County, Claremont, who we work with on uh regularly. I've also got some field trips planned in the process for fall. Um, again, we're probably gonna see a more enrollment there, especially because a fair number of our regulars haven't actually registered yet, so um, we've got a lot of new faces at um both locations this year.
Sounds like we're gonna find a bigger space already here to begin.
We feel like it. Um, so here's just some photos of how it's set up, but I didn't really get to show you guys. So we've got a kitchen and a few bathrooms there and a big open space. Uh, that's a bathroom as well. We brought over the TV so we can do movie night, probably once a month. Um, and then the teen programming. Here's slide. Um. The teen registration for grades eight through twelve is a little slow, but that's pretty applicable for the teens. Um, they always assume they don't have to show up. Um, or they don't have to sign up just to show up, so they show up and they're like, but I come all the time, or they guess, but you need a form for this year, so we're sending them home with forms. If they, if they're registered last year, we're giving them a grace period of a month or so to get their new form in and they're all aware of that. Um, staff has been really helpful this year in getting them all done. We rearranged
It's like a waiver.
It's a waiver updated on emergency contact and allergy information and that kind of stuff. Um, so we could develop new allergies every year, so I'll be on the safe side. Um, we've rearranged one of the rooms to set up a gaming room, so we've got the PS five that we bought that we're gonna be hooking up and we're looking into joining um an esports league that Collins has done research on. Um, so we're hopefully gonna get that started. We're reaching out to the school too, because I believe they have esports or some type of program that's similar, so we're gonna see how we can join forces in there. Oh, just as a reminder, this year we're gonna be completely in line with the school schedule, so I know there are some times we tried to be open when school wasn't open. That just doesn't really pan out for us. We will do the occasional um special programming on school um breaks, but in terms of like clothes for holidays, clothing for snow uh, including weather, that kind of stuff, and we're, we're shutting down for program on those days. Um, like I said before, we're gonna try and do some staff development on those days and special events. It's all on the calendar on our website, so if you guys want any updates, if something is happening, you can check out the website, see if Hudson News dot org. Uh, youth department soccer league started this weekend. We've got over eighty kids registered. However, we don't have enough volunteer coaches. Our two oldest teams, which are grades five through six, still need coaches. Um, so if you know anybody who's interested in coaching, please have them reach out to Nikira, who's our program coordinator at programs, head, see if Hudson News staff board. Did you say a hundred of the coach? Is that what I heard?
I don't even know how to place under.
Okay. We just need to show, use the accent.
You gotta watch it all around though, so.
Oh.
Um, what? No. I'm tired. It's gonna wind up. Um, I'll, I'll say that openly. Uh, the beach officially closed on Labor Day, and so once again, I want to just express my gratitude to all the guards that worked all season and especially the ones that rallied towards the end. You know, all those kids went back to school, had sports, all kinds of things, like we don't have anybody who's out of college working there, um, except for one of our lead guards and so for them to find ways to make their schedules work so that we could keep it open was amazing, and I think when their awareness of the goals that we had this year and it'll be easier to get them next year, they might be in their teens, but they might be planning ahead for that. Um we do have a big thing coming up on the beach next, and it's gonna be the big tell sauna that's starting up soon, which you guys all heard about, so I don't know when you can get your reservations in, but I would get on that if I were you. Um, some updates on the trail. We've had several incidents of vandalism on the trails at Oakdale, ranging from someone removing trail markers um and sinus destruction and signage to destruction of property on our forest platform. Uh, so the forest platform is actually a really great resource, not only to the Department of Youth for the programs we run, but also to the community members, really want to have a nice spot in the back to rest um on the trail. Before it was completely damaged, you know, I'd see people doing yoga back there or reading back there. It's really nice. It was also zero cost to the city. It was, you know, donated and volunteers built it. Volunteers have been continually repairing it and they did so again. They repaired it. Um, so the burn hole that's there is on the holes that are attached up. Uh, and unfortunately, we have to put up um a camera back there just to, you know, see what's going on, make sure it doesn't get any bigger, because and that um fire taken off, it could have been, you know, catastrophic, the trees catch. They're only a natural resource. Who knows what happens with a neighboring home, so there will be trail teams up. We will be monitoring what's happening back there. Um. So, yeah, uh, if you see anything, please let me know. Um, with that, I thought I might be fun to do something nice with trail cam, so I'm also gonna set some up on some of the game trails and see if we can get a glimpse into wildlife out there, because I know I saw um, uh, medium sized buck back there. You know, the deer are starting to come back. The squirrels are really active this time of year. The one time I set up a game cam before, when a fish washed on shore, we had, you know, fox, raccoon, like three different kinds of vultures, so cool stuff happens there. And if we don't continue to have days like today, I'll find time to put that on our Instagram page for Oakdale as well and share it with everybody. That's my name, it's Oakdale Park Hudson NY. We still really need a food and nutrition coordinator. This is a full-time role. The position is so important to the success of our program. We are giving a snack to every single kid who comes to our program and the option of a meal to every single kid who comes to our program, regardless of whether or not this position is filled. So that means that myself, our assistant director, our recintendence, even our secretary sometimes, we are cooking and preparing meals and snacks. Um as I think I've said before, the kids are excited that it's not me doing it. Um so if you know anybody, there is quite a you know, it is, there's a lot of requirements for this position and it's doesn't seem unfathomable that we could find someone within the community. It is open to all Columbia County at this point because you know, maybe the person who has all these bills can't afford it at the moment right now, so um, if you know anyone who's above the mountain, they can reach out to me directly at director@citypotsamuse.org. They can um find the application on the website, citypotsamuse.org. You go to the about dropdown menu and join our tool, the application is there.
It's a little posted on the city's website.
On the city's website and on indeed. Um, the issue we have right now with most of our applicants is either they're qualified and they live too far away, or they are not qualified, because of the service position, we do have to make sure they're qualified for the exam. Oh, what's that?
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, first of all, this people that you said that they were too far away, do you have their that their information, so in case when you open it for Columbia County?
It's open for Columbia County already, because they live outside of Columbia County, yeah.
Uh, about this cameras, did your department have them already or?
Um, we have several trail cameras already that I'm gonna put up and also friends of Hudson News that purchased them with locks, so that um we did run against some people moving things. Let me put them up initially, so.
I have to say, I've been seeing a lot of people, because I left them uh from Greenport coming down and um I mean, I don't know, it's not, I don't see a lot of Hudson people. I really just see people coming, you know, pedestrians.
I'm important.
Other council members have questions? More others?
Okay. Is there any validity instead of finding this position, like, you know, you work with like a majority raised kitchen or something that does prepared meals, would they be able to advise on the nutritional content beforehand and kind of bring it in bulk, so that at least like weekly?
The recovery kitchen is cooking our meals for the um at the church right now, because it's over there. They've done meals in the past. We've partnered with other programs in the past. An issue we've run up against with those with having an outside program do it is that there really is um, the kids can tell when it's not like a home cooking meal, you know, like they would send stuff that kids are never gonna eat and we try and get them to eat it and then we give them that.
I just, I like dino chicken nuggets. I need pasta and apple butter or oil.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it's hard. And we want them to feel like it is, you know.
Something and something I want.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Liz. Let's see. Uh, George, if you're wondering is he still here?
I'm here.
Okay, I'm holding up, I'll be only because there might be some other issues involved. I'll tell you when we get to it. Maya, did you have anyone to add? Maya.
Social app.
Do you have anyone, Dan?
Excuse me.
Did you have anything? Okay, so um Jeff Demansky, who's online, and he's gonna tell us about a project. And I hope you will keep it very brief because this is only the beginning of a process that he is gonna explain to you. Go ahead, Jeff.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. Uh, my name is Jeff Demansky and I am serving on the uh, the New York State uh Energy Research Development Authority's Clean Energy Communities Team as a subject matter expert. Forgot all the words there, um, but I am, I have been working with this program that Hudson is now exploring called Community Choice Aggregation. The acronym very commonly used is CCA, and again, it stands for Community Choice Aggregation. It's a program that was enabled in New York State back in twenty sixteen by the Public Service Commission. And in the order by the Public Service Commission, it in a nutshell, enabled cities and towns and villages to act on behalf of their And in the order by the Public Service Commission, it in a nutshell, enabled cities and towns and villages to act on behalf of their community members. All, all members within a community municipal boarders. For electricity supply decision making. It can be used for other things, but the main purpose that it's used for is to deliver a, a decision-making benefit for community members on electricity supply choice. It is the biggest and most powerful tool in the states. Uh, it's not a state program. Again, it's, it's a, it's a program that enables municipalities to pursue it. But the state has encouraged it and, and rewards communities through its clean energy communities programs who launched these programs. Uh, because it is recognized as the biggest tool uh, in the quiver, if you will, for addressing the state's climate goals. The idea in, in very brief terms is a buying club concept. Electricity supply is on one hand, a simple decision that lives on someone's utility bill. But. Back in the nineteen nineties, when the New York State uh, energy grid, the, the utility market was deregulated. It created a situation where. Your local utility company is your delivery company. They maintain their control over the, the delivery of electricity from the grid to the customer base. In essence, your utility company is like UPS or the postal service or FedEx. A lot of people don't realize that, that they are only a delivery company. That is, that is the, the main way they make their money in terms of, of, of energy delivery. Because of the deregulation, there are dozens and dozens of electricity supply companies that are available. That utility customers may choose from. The idea of CCA is to vet the options that are out there. To optimize the choices that are out there with, in particular, the reason the state is supporting the program to support a way where you can have a win-win scenario. Through a buying club idea that through the power of the, the majority of community members being part of the program. You can obtain, you can optimize a choice in terms of rate. While also supporting renewable supplies from New York State. Through the program in a win-win scenario. So it can be a very, very cost-effective way. To support renewable production on the New York State grid. Almost exclusively and, and always better than somebody could do on their own, should they choose to support renewables entering into their own contract. The mechanism is a municipality must pass a local law to do this, and that is what is at hand. I, I've, I understand that there is a, a draft legislation that has been drafted. Um, the law is, is passed if it's chosen by the community empowering them to pursue this program. It does not commit them to doing the program. It allows the exploration for whether this program makes sense. The subsequent steps that a municipality would pursue. Are to identify the administration path they might like to choose. And there are a number of state-approved administrators that, that can be the option to choose. To pursue a program. And then to do education. Um, about the program to the community and to do outreach. Um, and then to evaluate, look at the market with the guide of their administrator that they're working with through no commitment with no cost. Um, whether it makes sense to launch a program. Um, and then if it does make sense, the program moves to launch. A critical part of the way the program works, the way the buying, buying club has leverage and power. Is that it becomes the default decision. It does not take away any choices that a consumer has for electricity supply. They can, one, enter into the private marketplace. Two, they could stay with the original default condition where the local utility will make that supply decision for them. But it's a decision where the, the consumer has no input to that. And when the utilities make the choice, it's predominantly non-renewable sources. Or three, they could stay with the program choice, the CCA program choice. Um, again, there is, the, the first steps of exploration are that they are exploration. There is no commitment. If a community chooses to launch the program all the way through. Except for time spent evaluating the components of the program, the, the, the local law. Um. Supporting the education, there, there's not a cost to support this. The administrator typically leads on the full effort of, of doing the education for the program. Um, and then through the launch and, and all of the components, there is no cost to the municipality for the program. It is truly structured as a symbiotic relationship to deliver benefit to community members. Again, in line with helping the state meet uh, the, the, the climate goals that lie before it. I'm going to stop there. I know I shared quite a bit of information already, but I'll just stop and answer questions and I'm glad to speak at further length of any component of it.
So first thing I want to make clear is all we're really talking about at this stage. Is a law that allows us to consider it in the future. So there's no commitment, any kind at this point. Questions?
Absolutely correct.
Yeah. Um, hey, uh, yeah, thanks for that. Just, can I just repeat back to you like what I heard? Just so I kind of understanding that essentially. We have a buyer's club where we get enough people in that we can compete with some of these other uh, energy delivery companies who. Are pursuing non-renewable sources and that if we get enough people, we can negotiate with the grid to maybe get a better deal on renewable energy. And sort of hopefully incentivize through the market that way.
Well, that is correct, that the administrator acting on your behalf in conjunction with your participation um. Puts in a request for proposals out to the supply marketplace, to all the suppliers out there who bid to be the supplier for the municipality. Typically. With other municipalities to build up the leverage. It's not the responsibility of, of the city of Hudson. To gather that aggregation. That is part of the choice that you would make in choosing administrator. They take on the burden of assembling the aggregation of communities for this electricity supply choice.
So is like the bidding entity, the city of Hudson itself versus larger, larger aggregation of Hudson with other communities?
City of Hudson likely would need to go with other communities to get across the threshold to have the, the, uh, the necessary number of, of accounts to have leverage in the supply marketplace. But again, that's the burden of the administrator to, to um, to achieve that aggregation.
And what's like, just for this area right now and for like the other, um. I mean, would you be bidding with other municipalities in this immediate region? Or do you sort of do a hodgepodge of other place, like other places like around the Hudson Valley?
Yes, it does not have to be contiguous communities. So it can be a number of communities assembled together. There's currently an active program here in the Hudson Valley that includes the town and village of Sogardies and the town of Red Hook and a number of other communities. Um, they're not contiguous, they're not attached, but it's about a dozen of them that aggregated and launched a program earlier this year. As well as another program in Rockland County.
And you know what? I mean, this is totally fine. Is that I know we're just like one community, like community in the midst of this, but do you know what the energy mix would be for a community of Hudson? Would be, be pursuing mostly wind or solar? What, what would be our sort of like renewable, like what would we be bidding on for our community?
Predominantly, the um, the sources have been predominantly hydropower for New York State sources, though there is wind included in the mix, hydropower. So water power has, there's a lot of water power in New York State. Though there is an increasing amount of wind power, onshore wind power that's part of this. Um, the future will likely be more offshore wind as part of the mix. Solar is allowed. Um, as well as, but most of the solar is being used for different purposes. And I won't go into the details to, to confuse it, but it's not commonly part of this, though it can be part of the mix.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So we'll be seeing a uh. Resolution shortly to uh, begin the process. And I'm sure Jeff will be back. To steer us through it further.
I'm happy to answer any questions at any time.
Thank you. Okay, um. Let's see, I see there's a, uh. I've been trying to figure out. Our guests here and I assume it's uh. About the street naming application?
Yes.
This, that's not on the agenda. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure.
I was told it was on the agenda, but it's good.
Who, who told you that?
I talked to him, in fact, from Charlotte Frank. I talked to him the other day. He said it was on.
No, what we have is the communication that we got your letter. Um, we haven't gotten the formal responses from the other. Um. You, you, you read the process for going through this. We have ninety days to, to put the resolution through.
Yeah.
But I, what I think of since you're here. If you want to just give a quick presentation on. Who, what it is, who it's for, and why you think they're worthy of a street name.
Yes, I appreciate that. I would hear that.
Sure. Greg Mosley. Husband of.
I am label so. Um, land. It was very quickly then. Um, I'm great. It is on the website as part of the agenda.
Uh, no.
Not the application. Okay, that's what we have.
All right, sorry. I can deliver this, said man, or a miscommunication. I'm Greg Mosley, I'm this operation at New York. We've been in this community for thirty some years, forty-two years, my wife and I in the community. What? What came to my, came to my attention that when the city had passed a, a, a resolution allowing for a name, the streets to be named someone's name. I saw it, I thought nobody be more, more further. Um. Better suited for the position at this time than the Walt Dower family. Jacob and Barbara Walt Dower. Uh, you talk about the rich history of Hudson. But you can't talk about the rich history of Hudson and pride yourself with the rich history of the city without including the Walt Dowers and the names and what they did in this community. They, they were founded of a restaurant, bar restaurant in the city and they, they serviced. The entire community. And if you're not from Hudson long-term, ask somebody and they'll, they'll let you know that the Walt Dower is very instrumental in the development of the city of Hudson there. And a rich piece of the fabric of what the city is about. So I'll, my wife should speak a little about it and the. Children, the children are here.
Good. Okay, so my name is Mosley and I believe since this um, was delivered to the council members, I'm not sure if everybody saw a copy of this yet. Okay, possibly. All right. So really, um, what I plan to just go over, um, Greg has covered um, some of the introduction about the families. But basically, this is um, this presentation includes a map. Uh, for people in the public who cannot see, we do have a map and the total length of Warren Street that would be affected is approximately one-eighth of a mile. And that bounds the streets from third to second street. And this is significant because that's a location of the block in nineteen eighty-two. When Walt Dowers purchased and established the Savoye Bar and Restaurant. Uh, we've, Greg covered um, a little bit more of what I was going to say, but I think at this point, since we need to be agreed. I'd like to turn it over to the family members who traveled and came this way that could come up and say something about their legacy and also what's continuing today.
Before you begin, let me tell council members, chapter two, six, seven is the recent addition on street naming. If you want to see the procedure, the most of it, it's been followed so far, waiting for. Uh. I guess we have to have the, this, the. Department of Works to design the actual sign. But furthermore, it's not taking away the existing name on the street. It's just an additional name on top. Come on up.
Thank you.
And while, while they're coming forward, I want to say. The parents of the Walt Dowers were instrumental, but that has continued through the family. Jacob. Has helped with Operation Night Spring funding for our youth. We have a computer lab built and Operation Night Education brought our center. Marcus has been instrumental in computer, a computer program we call Each One Reach One, where we give computer laptop to, to Columbia County uh, students going to college. He is, he is, he's integrated that program. Jake has been managing securing funds for our, our, our computer program, computer lab. But this, this is something gone throughout the family right now. I'll be out the way, Jake.
Uh, sure. Thank you very much. Um. President, thank you for allowing us to present. Apologies that I was formerly um, on the agenda. You know. We buried my mom a little over a year and a half ago. And. You know, it was the case that the family always knew that we had plot for everybody. And you'll get, I'm going to just, just a second. And so when it came time to lay her to rest. You realize that the family had no more plots. Right? And the reason why the family had no plots. Is because um, Barbara Walt Dower had given all the plots away. And she had given them to people. Um, some of which she knew, some of which she didn't do. Um, simply because. They needed them. And at any given point in time. If someone needed something more than she did, she was happy to part with it. Always believing that God would provide a way for her to get whatever she needed to get. Um, to move on to the next day, the next week, whatever. Um, a lot is discussed about my parents and the business that they established. Um, and to my knowledge, it was one of the most successful black-owned businesses. Um, in the history of the state of New York, not just. The city of Hudson. Um, to be in business anywhere for thirty-five years. Um, says a lot. And those of you who live in Hudson now, have been in Hudson for the last twenty-five years as we've gone through this Renaissance. Have seen businesses come and seen businesses go. Very few can say they've been around for, for over three decades. Um, but to, to us, those who really knew them and really knew Savoye. Know that. The business. Wasn't just a success. Um, because it stayed in business for thirty-five years. Um, it helped them buy a house. It helped them put three kids through, through school and helped them be very kind to their grandchildren. Um, the business was a success because. They consistently recycled the dollars that they made. Back into the community. Um, and. They did that without question. And that has always lived with me. Um, I left here. Went to school, moved to New York to work on Wall Street and started a very successful investment management firm. But everything I learned, I learned from my mother and father sort of sitting at the kitchen table. Um, and the motto of my firm, which serves clients around the world is. We don't just care about profits, we care about people. Um, and so, um, if you didn't know my mother and father, um, that's who they were. Um, they stayed in business. Until the point in which we told them they could no longer stay in business. And the reason why. They stayed in business is not because they had a house to pay off. It wasn't because they took expensive vacations. They pretty much worked three hundred sixty-five days a year. And even during the holidays, they stayed open for people who were less fortunate or they were providing meals to homeless people who really had nowhere to go. Um, they stayed open because it gave them a way to continue um, to serve this community. So um. I know this request came from Elena and Greg, who are dear family friends and. Um, also pillars of the community. Um, but I asked at the appropriate time um. That you approve something like this because I think it really gives us a chance to memorialize. Uh, two people who gave their life. To the city of Hudson. Um, secondly, you know, we are in one of those political climates. In which, you know, people are trying to erase history or trying to, you know, longer allow people to teach certain things about history. Um, and I think the history of Hudson is extremely important. Um, and we should all do whatever we can. Um, to try and preserve that so that whether people who were born and raised here decide to move somewhere else. Um, people who come in have a chance to appreciate those who came before them and those who played a major role. Um, in building the city and this community uh, into what it is today. So I realize I've been a little long-winded. Um, I could probably go on and on about two people who I love more than, you know, anybody in this world. Um, but thank you for hearing this out and thank you for at the appropriate time taking this under consideration.
Yes, I have a few little.
One second. I just want to say that one of the, some of the confusion is this is going to be the first. Street naming. That's why we, we haven't really honed the process of how to do it. So. So we're a little confused, but we'll get it done. And in fact, I will be the official sponsor.
Thanks for just speaking with us today. Thanks, Greg, and Elena, we appreciate it. So I know Walt Dower, but I'm not known as Walt. I'm known as Jake and Barbara's daughter. Nobody knows my name. And I think Jake hit on a lot of points there. I think my dad are a real nice, quiet guy, playing pocket guy, just as I know as community. But nobody needs the power of what he did. His profile went back into the community. They supported the boys' club. They supported the girls' basketball team. Um, they were members of Operation Unite. They gave up funeral expenses. They did repasses for families. So many people didn't know all the things that our parents did. My mom, she had a lot of flair. She was at every event. She helped cook. Um, if you were hungry, you could always count on a meal at Savoye. So I think there's so many things that many people don't know that they did in the community. We speak of historical Hudson and that's what we're known for on the map. They are a part of the history of Hudson, New York. You know, they've been around for a very long time. Everybody called mom Aunt Barbara. Dad was Uncle Jake. They were in our biological family, but that's what everybody called them. Just wanted to say that part. Um, we had a Thanksgiving dinner one day and nothing was open on Warren Street. I don't know. We had five to seven families come on in and have dinner with us. That's just who they were. They were very humble people. I think that to remember them and name that street after them would be very memorable. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll let you know, I want to say, I'll let you know when, you know, where, when it gets further along and when we have the resolution. And then, of course, the official putting it up will be up.
And and just add really quickly to what they said is, my parents were really the epitome of the American dream. Neither one of my parents graduated from high school. But we built a business and rounded up and made sure all our kids went to college. And our grand, and their grandkids went to private schools, so it's really the epitome of the American dream, those ones that.
Uh you know, you guys, only I've known you guys forever. Um this is just an honor, I think, you know. So just knowing who the Walt Dower family is and, you know, um. When you talk about history of Hudson, like you said, you gotta talk about the Walt Dowers. Barbara and Jake has always been an essential uh part of Hudson. And you know, I just think this is very historical and a great moment for him. You know, thank you, actually.
And I I thank this, I thank City for the consideration as you continue to do your work and uh thank you again for this.
Thank you, Greg, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
I think, now you said you're gonna. Did you say you're gonna sponsor because if you're not gonna sponsor, probably sponsor?
Yeah, I'm a sponsor.
Okay, both the signage and the application because there's two, there's two Ps.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, yeah.
Okay, because I think this is a a great um. Direction because it's gonna be our first. And I think it's uh not a family more well in my in my than Walt Dower. To experience this, that's our first experience in naming, giving this honor. And I really look forward to this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, where are we? Uh George, you wanna um make your presentation now? You only made the late George, George, where are you? It's this, you may have to go into executive session, discuss some of the things after you make your presentation. Okay, because we can't. You know, if if we're talking about negotiation over the price, we can't do that, we don't necessarily do that.
No, understood, totally, yeah, whatever you guys want to, if you don't want me to present, I'm happy to. Submit to you and.
Yeah, no, uh I think you saw the video of the last time when I went through what this is about.
Right, that's what I'm responding to, yeah.
As you may recall. Uh they they have a building on State Street on the corner of Fourth and, no, no, Fourth and State. They want to change the corner and buy a little piece of property there. Um do you want to do a quick presentation?
I'll do a quickie. I I I was really, I was really sad when the Savoye closed, I was like. Interesting, um. Let me just get out of your way, I I'm, thanks for your time, I'll make this brief as I can. After that heartfelt uh presentation, my my needs are very insinuated. Uh I've really tried to tangle the presentation to the questions that were presented, one of them was what was the zoning? And the zoning, this property is right here and that zoning is an R two H, which is. A one and two family and conditional office. Uh I think Mr. Morante had may, put out the question and maybe it was more valuable because it was a commercial property. And that's it, it's not, okay, the next slide. Uh this is part of the reason that we, this is the property that my wife and I, Michelle and Shannon, purchased. Um when we purchased the property, this is, you know, ignorance is bliss. We thought this was part of, was part of the property and then when we had a survey put. Uh requested a survey uh for for this property, uh lo and behold, we discovered that no, this is not owned by us. And uh so we're in the process of of negotiating with the city about this price. The reason I showed this slide is that you can see this ponding of water here. Uh it it's all about in the curb that's kind of depressed. We just, we would like to purchase this so we can deal with the drainage issues that are there. Uh the other question was, would you be building any structures and. Contrary to that, we, this is what it looked like originally, it's been there, it's sitting like that for probably a good time of like twenty-five, thirty years. Uh next slide please. Uh we, instead of adding or building a structure onto that vacant piece of ground, which it's too small to build on, I won't want it. Uh but we said, let's take off that and restore the house back to its original condition. Uh next slide please. Um and you know, it's a general. You know, part of the reason that we're negotiating with the city, to be quite honest with you guys, is that. Uh we've got to spend a lot of money to reconstruct this curb. Uh the, we just lost the curbs, this is a tradition that all cities knew throughout the country. They just, they don't really take the asphalt off, they just put another concrete up, so what it does is it raises the grade and you start to lose the curb. So to reestablish that grade, we're gonna have to reconstruct, which we're more than happy to do. Uh the curb and uh get the drainage working again. Uh it, you know, and this is, this is, you can kind of see how this curb works. And we feel like it's a benefit for us and the city because once this is reconstructed. Um we'll get the water to drain correctly and snow clearing and drainage will be less of a problem for. This is the, this is, if you can just look at that for a second, uh this is what, this is the piece of property. Uh the ci- the city owns and um it's right, it's adjacent to the property that we purchased. And uh we'd like to, uh there was a, there was a question about. Are you gonna put in a big fence in Memphis, you know, more of a private area and. It's really too small to put a big fence around and I think that would be inappropriate. So next slide please, we we said, let's just do a quick sketch. And what we're thinking is, is that it's just a little low fence that goes around the property. The sidewalk would wrap around and uh, you know, I I don't. Uh we don't, to be honest with you, we don't desire to have a contractual uh. Articulation of what that fence looks like, but this is a general idea of what we're thinking about, something that's not intrusive. You know, I don't know if this is flowers or what type of landscape in there. Uh but just something low that allows people to see in, because you, if you put in a big fence. You're not gonna get any light, so you're not gonna be able to grow anything in it, I saw. Um and that's, that's it, thank you for your time and.
You're welcome, and uh. The appraisal was, I I forgot.
Was it fifteen?
Fifteen, Crystal will chime in here, I think. Um appraisal was at fifteen.
It's like, yeah, the the appraisal was fifteen thousand.
And your counter offer is?
Our counter offer was five.
So we don't have to make that decision right now, do we? I mean, we can.
No, because I I I think we, you know, we can, if you want to renegotiate or uh Christmas, then we can. Go in the second session.
Oh, you want to do that now?
I I I'm just saying.
Right, no, that's what I'm asking.
I mean, if we get that, if that can speed it along.
Okay, George, this isn't gonna change easements um for the public going around the corner to go the other way, right?
You mean the sidewalk, right?
Yeah, that sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, can you go back to that last slide? Yeah, we, our our goal is, and I'm trying to show this with my crude ignoring skills, that we put in a new curb. To raise the grade so that we drain out and you have a sidewalk that goes around. So no, it won't interfere with the public, you just wouldn't have the sidewalk right next to the house. The sidewalk would follow the curb around the corner.
So you said you're ren- you're renovating the the house to.
We are, we just, we were just issued, Craig just issued us a uh building permit a couple of days ago and. And Mike Meyer is is gonna put in a sewer line and we're starting tomorrow, so. Yeah, we're all ready to, you know, we're all dressed up.
You gonna bring back the metal ceilings in the first floor?
Uh they're still there, I mean, that's part of, you know that house, you must know that well, that's part of the thing that was.
That's my grandmother's story.
Yeah, that's right, I get a lot of people, yeah, I'm up on a ladder, they're yelling at me going, I was, I bought candy at that.
I'm trying to think the best way to, because we have some resolutions, I mean, maybe we should do the resolutions and then go into executive session, or should we?
I think, I think we do a resolution, because at the end, you know.
Okay, so.
All you guys reach out to me and.
Yeah, we don't, we'll get back to you.
Absolutely.
After, I mean, you don't have to stay for that because.
Absolutely, no.
But we'll let you know through an email what we decide.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, George.
Well, thank you.
So let's get these resolutions done, then we can go into executive session. The first resolution, pointing Commissioner Deeds. No.
Oh, you're gonna send an article second, Ryan Arden.
Yes. I am. Uh second resolution. A resolution to authorize the mayor to execute an amended fee schedule for municipal advisors. I believe um. It's a covering header.
This is the having one, yeah, I'll be sick.
For a second, you guys, great. The next one is a resolution. Just one, oh, this, we need a little time on this. Vicky and her neighbors or and people in her, in her uh. Award have identified a problem with the sidewalk. Or lack of sidewalk going to the uh. Middle school, not a middle school, the elementary school. Or as people around here like to say, elementary. Um anyway, Rob has suggested that we'll take. Uh a design which will roughly cost around five thousand dollars to figure out how to do this um. Change in the street because there's a problem with a uh. Problem with a sewer there. Um. Do you wanna, should we just go ahead and take a, you two guys? To that person. Oh, you wanna be one of them? You want to talk more about it or?
Uh I'd like to talk about it, uh it's a very small stretch of, it's not a long um. It's uh, it goes from hardwood. Uh the paddock and then it goes up, yeah, and uh. And uh. And um it just, it's, the problem with the, with the area of hardwood and. Uh paddock is that the, there's these turns, almost ninety degree turns. Yes, there's no sidewalk and there are these kids bicycling and they're all going, yeah, okay.
And blocking in the wrong direction, yeah.
Yes, and then the path is they go from the school all the way to Oakdale. And then when the people district is done, then it just is a very high uh traffic for children. So yeah, it will be great, it's it's not as expensive, of course sidewalk is the best solution, but it may take time. So we figured the path will be good.
Okay. The. The last resolution authorizes a budget amendment to fund the development and update for the city's comprehensive plan. But guys. And. We still have two laws on our um. That's, and I need an introduction and second to another local law that um. It's a local law amending Article one, chapter sixty-five of the city code. And it involves extending the public areas where you can have a um. A permit. To have alcohol beverages. Uh let me get an introduction and second person, then we can talk about it. You sound like you can't wait.
He's already got the permit, nevermind.
My thought, again, because it's, it's so quick, is that for discussion, I think we should put it back to legal. And so we can discuss, because where did this law come from?
Oh, it came, it came from the uh mayor's office and uh it was written by. The city attorney Andrew Allen, so people that have a permit to uh.
So it's like a food truck, if you were to do something at Promenade Hill and you have a food truck selling like those rosé cans or something, you'd be allowed to do it there.
Not to allow drinking in the park. You still have to get a permit.
Okay, so so for example, I mean, it's not probably a good idea to allow drinking at Walmart, I mean, at Walmart. Because of, you know, getting a permit for that. Do you send it the way it looks like you?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying, um.
I think that's the discretionary part about the permit.
So I think, I think part of it should say, it shouldn't be at these locations.
It does. It's just the waterfront park, the boat launch. The Seventh Street Park. On Promenade Hill. And public property or city property. Uh so, you know, like if somebody had a block party or something like that.
But it's a public, I can see.
Yeah, but it's, it's clearly not gonna be allowed from the way the law is written. We can uh. Kind of think, uh, well, Charlie's going to affect the next meeting now, we we can take a look at it as well.
Yeah, and I just, I just like, you know, it it. Encourage, you know, people to speak up for or against, because I guess, you know.
Yeah. You?
Why we request it in. Yeah, so. Effectively, we, this is what we are allowing it, so even though the law is currently exists. So that only, as it's written, only, you can only get a permit for alcohol serving at the waterfront park. Which doesn't administratively make a whole lot of sense to us, so. When if, for example, with Hudson Pride this year, there was a vendor that wanted to be able to sell those nine pin, wanted to be able to sell ciders at. Promenade Hill Park because that's where the parade ended. We decided that we were going to, with discussion with the police department, to allow that to happen. We have our plan, there's a plan for an Oktoberfest celebration with uh all of the um. Beer vendor, uh the new breweries that are in town um on um State Street. That we decided we're gonna let that happen, so it's it's sort of already occurring and we felt that this was mostly just. A way, uh an administrative update to the law to be able to enable us to.
Wait, Oktoberfest, they're not gonna be closing State Street, it's gonna be at the breweries?
I think they might.
I think there is going to be a. One block.
Yeah, that one block.
Between Hudson City and.
Yeah.
Well, just past the um. Exit Hudson.
Hope they don't go crazy.
Okay, so now we go into executive session, uh kind of a.
I'll make a link.
Everybody approve?
Yeah.
Alright, I'm running executive session, so uh Jack and I have to leave, sorry. Okay. You're forgiven. Yeah, well, you can come back, but there's not much else happening. It can come back.
It's only, don't they?
Yeah, it'll be like five minutes.
Yes.
Just state the purpose for the executive session, is to discuss negotiations for the sale of property?
Uh what what she said.
Yeah.
That was, yeah, um let's see, who else should be here?
Do you want to invite Heather?
Yeah, has anybody mind Heather's share?
No, it's good, it's um Linda.
Uh yeah, definitely. Okay, we're down to, so, you've heard what the story is.
Yeah.
So the appraisal was fifteen, he went south, they went off at five.
Uh Tom, Tom, you're still recording.
Oh, sorry.
Uh oh, you saw that?
Yeah.
Jack, you can come back, Jack? Jack, you can come back. Jack?
We're gonna just take down our sound group wall. Anybody, anybody? Deactivate. That was just an air title, it's like, it's very clear, even the chamber was never. Oh, yeah.
Who wants to make a motion?
I, I will make the motion to permit a counteroffer.
I'll say yes. And all those in favor, should we vote? I don't think we, we can do it, we won't vote. All those in favor, sit back and say aye.
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 Anyone to call us? Okay, and so you've heard the different parameters, and that's it.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Crystal. Anything else from this meeting?
Yeah.
Um, can I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, you can, but wait, do you want?
I'd love to show the video just to get around. Yeah. You guys want to see, it's been flooding again? I mean, I'm almost scared that you said two feet this time. Oh, yeah, it's always been two feet, actually, but sorry, I, I mean, it's really hard to show you guys. I can come around again. So the thing with this is. Which block are you on again? Union. And. Uh, so right in the middle.
Have you spoken to the marketer about all this?
To who, sir?
Marker.
Yes, she knows, yeah. So you can see. It's a lot of water. It's twelve thousand gallons. It comes in really quickly. Um. Oh, God. Yeah, it's, it's totally messed up. I mean, everybody who sees it, honestly, the, the, everyone just kind of nods their head like they feel sorry for me and they're like, you know, I'm lucky with that. And, you know, the only reason I thought was that city's responsibility in the first place is that they always treated it like it was, because it probably is, as far as I understand. You know, they've always shown up and said they were gonna do something about it. The problem is, it's been a really long time and no actual solution is materializing. I don't believe in the solution of just clearing it down the way. I can, obviously, it makes a certain amount of sense and it might help for a while, but it's, it's just not a permanent solution.
Well, I think DC is gonna have to chime in on that, too.
I think so.
Because he has put in the application, I mean, the proposal. He had to, he had to August thirty-first to put in a proposal how he's gonna deal with that. And I presumably, they're gonna decide as well whether that's adequate or not.
Yeah, and to me, I didn't read anything in it that even, you know, it didn't seem to meet their criteria for adequate.
Okay, as you know, we can really.
No, I know.
We do, but.
I, the, the new plan I have, I was actually excited about it. I was hoping he would like, if he did not want to hear it, he didn't want to make eye contact with me last time. And there, I think frankly, he didn't like me presenting the last meeting, make that clear. That's lost to us. Yeah, sure, I get it, it's a long meeting. But just so people understand, I think the new solution I'm proposing is, rather than a very expensive diversion of creating a new sewer down union, which I don't imagine anyone can afford, or even a short diversion that just goes in front of my house and then down and destroys my garden, I think that we should maybe think about the fact that exit lines is the responsibility of the homeowner. Maybe they shouldn't be exiting to a hundred and fifty-year-old sewer. Everybody gets on the proper line, which is the cherry alley. And we don't even know how many homes are exiting to this thing. It might be a small number, might just be four people. But that's the biggest thing, is finding the discovery, right? It's that. Yeah, but it's.
The discovery what?
You, you.
I caution you all, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but Rob has cautioned us to say too, again, saying too much.
Right, sure. Oh, I'll tell you what I know. It's super easy. They knock on the door, they say, maybe flush this down your toilet, please? They watch it down the manhole. If the dye packet comes out, that house is connected to the sewageway. It's very cheap, very easy, and then it's all, and then, so the homeowners are the ones who are gonna have the really bad head of having to pay for something they don't want to pay for, which honestly, I do not feel good about at all, but seems to really be viable solution. And then the city has a real easy time just capping those pipes afterwards. It's a total minimal cost to the city, and it permanently takes the thing offline. I thought it was a really attractive plan, and I don't know why I've been having a hard time selling it. It's probably the messenger. I apologize. No.
Like I said, I think like what Tom said, I think, you know, we're all sympathetic to what's going on, but, you know, we don't have the expertise or the engineering or what legally.
Part of the environment, right?
Yeah, right. I, I think, I mean, and I could be, you know, humble myself. It's, I, you know, thought about it for two years, talked to the engineers and the contractors. It's, I don't think it's super complicated. It's, this is a hundred and fifty-year-old pipe. It's just swiss cheese. It's not even a pipe. It's, you know, raw, right? So, you know, why hold on to it? You know, if only like five homes are exiting to this thing, let's just like all get on the proper sewer. It's probably what the code would say anyways. We can talk the crap tomorrow, because you're not really supposed to have your lines running under your neighbors, especially if it's flooding. So I, it just seems straightforward to me. So anyways, thanks for your time. And sorry.
No. Dominic, have the motion on paper?
I'll second. Make the motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye. You want to phone?
Gotta talk to you.
Okay.